In that case, I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council Work Session for Tuesday, February 23rd. Roll call, please, Marty.
I'll take it. Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Partini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Corum is present.
Thank you. And then, the the purpose for this work session is to have a discussion of the city code review, the code of ordinances. We have obviously multiple chapters, so the first step is to figure, is to establish priorities on what we feel are the most important chapters to begin with. And so, I was thinking that if everyone has had a chance to fill out their their spreadsheet, then I'd like to just go across with, for instance, number one, and then a show of hands with regards to how many think it's a five, four, three, two, and one. And then we'll total those up at the end, and the chapters that have the highest scores are going to have the highest priorities based on our collective vote. So and then after that, go ahead.
Could I ask something? I don't know. I mean, I think this was like a really helpful tool, but I guess in my mind, like, I kind of thought that each of us have, maybe would have certain chapters that we wanted to work on, and so.
See, that's the next part, though.
Well, my question is, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
I was just gonna say that my my prior, like my, the ones I was interested in also reflect my priorities. And so, if we all have different priorities, I'm not sure that we'll be able to identify a consensus on what all of them are, if they all mirror our preferences. So I'm wondering if maybe it's easier to frame it as people who are wanting to work on specific sections?
Because that's kind of, I mean, I, I went through and I read all of the ordinances, sort of, I gave them a quick read-through, and I guess for me, it was easier, like, I sometimes have a hard time, like, I made sort of four tiers of like importance to me, but I only had, had a, you know, I didn't have a ton that were like right away. To note, like, like, it's not, it's not mandatory for anyone to do any or any number, so like, you know, if someone has one they're really interested in, I'd love for them to have that one. And that may be different than any of the ones that any of the rest of us are interested in.
Yeah, I agree, because I don't know that my five are going to be the same as the other people. I mean, I took five and I tried to put the five importance, but, you know, there, we could all have different ones, so I don't know how that's going to work, you know? How we could vote on a certain one when I don't even have that one, and, you know, I mean, I don't know.
So, would it be helpful, maybe, Mayor Greenberg, if we went through and then, real quick, and anyone noticed they had that as one of their highest priority of something they wanted to work on? Would that help to start there?
Well, the other portion of the spreadsheet is set up so that we can express, you know, priorities in terms of who is interested in working on which chapter. And so, we, we can start with that, but, you know, what I'm trying to figure out here is you know, I think the goal is to not only assign council members to chapters that they want to be involved in, but also determine in what order we want to take these, we want to address these particular chapters. So that's, that's why the spreadsheet was set up to, to accomplish both, both of those goals, but you know.
If we're divided into teams working on a couple chapters, are they going to be happening simultaneously or sequentially? Like, I kind of thought if, like, they could be happening, happening simultaneously, if we're only working on a couple and we're all on teams.
Right, they, they could be, yeah.
But it's so, sorry, so I don't understand what you're talking about, Barry.
The, you know, we're working on teams with board and commission members. And if someone, you know, if we want to work on all of them at the same time, that's fine with me.
No, no, I think it's, I think it's like, so since this is a fairly, you know, good time commitment over a period of time, like, I think it's important whoever's working on them, like, is invested, like, that's what they want to work on, so it could be like, I'm the only one who wants to work on one, so I have, you know, I have a board person who's also interested in that, you know, and the two of us will work on that ordinance together, and then say and I are both interested in one, so maybe what we could do is go through and establish which ones we each want to work on, and then eliminate those, and then work through the next, you know, what's the next ones everyone wants to work on? Does that make sense, or no?
Well, did, did anyone find it helpful to express their interest in each of the chapters based on the scale of one to five?
I'd like to hear what Karen has to say.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the comment?
That I'd like to hear what Karen has to add.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I found it helpful to, you know, pick the five that I what needed, you know, we're a good place to start, but other than that, I don't know if it's the same as what other people feel, so I like Jenny's idea of just, because I already know which one I would like to be on, and nobody else might have picked that one. So, that's kind of why I thought that was a good idea, just to start with which one you prefer to work on.
Okay, so, if I go through these chapters, anyone that, you know, that feels that they want to work on that particular chapter, then just raise their hand?
That, that's what they want to work on first, yes. Doesn't, wouldn't want to work on it down the road, but this is what they want to do first. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
But, okay.
Like, it's the most important to them, so they would like to start with that chapter or chapters. And then, once maybe they get more time or they complete those, move on to the next.
Now, that's why I set it up, so that, you know, the ones that you want to work on most, you put a five in. And the ones you want to work on least, you put a one in.
I think where we come into a problem with your system is that what's a five to me, maybe, maybe a one to Councilmember Wood, so if you're adding them up, you may not get.
No, I'm not adding those up.
Well, you said, you said that, so.
This is the priority in terms of what we collectively feel. That one, what the collective score was based on what we collectively feel is the most important chapter. And then, the second portion of it is which ones we want to work on. You know, no one, no one asked me any questions about the spreadsheet, so I assume that we were on board with regards to the process.
Well, I was going to, as I had to refill out my sheet, I remember leaving the priority one blank for a reason, and, you know, the, the, obviously, the goal here is to get through all of our code and ordinances and do it. And we might as well start as, as, as councilpeople to work on the ones we want, and then once those are complete, then we'll have a smaller list to choose from, and then we can pick from that, and so on and so forth, so you know, I'm not sure that establishing a general priority is, is necessary, only because we have enough councilpeople and enough volunteers from our boards to, you know, to, to move effectively through all the ordinances, and I would imagine the first round is probably going to get all the ones that are not only important to councilpeople, but also our constituents as well, so then we can kind of move down the, move down the line.
Yeah, the, the process also involves, involves board and commission members. So I guess it's our priorities then that are going to govern which board and man, commission members participate in what order, so.
Right.
Okay. So, as far as, you know, if we go through the list in terms, for instance, general provisions, who who would like to be working on that? Anyone? Okay. I'll move on, then, administration.
I have that one, but I would say it's like my number three choice, so I'm interested in it, but it's low priority to me right now.
Okay, see, I gave each one of the chapters a priority, but, you know, from one to five, ones are the ones I'd be fun to work on, and fives are the ones that I feel that I have the most to contribute to. So.
Yeah, no, I did something similar to what you did for all of them, and so that's what I'm voicing right now.
Okay, so, no one established.
Sorry, I think Councilmember Phillips was trying to say something.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, similar to Sarah, I have it as a, you know, a medium priority, and that I would want to work on it, but it's also one of my lower choices, so in terms of the amount of interest, it was a two.
And I think, yeah, for right now, I'm just identifying like the ones, like, or, well, on yours, it would be a five. That's what I'm saying yes to. It does not mean that I am not interested in that down the road, I guess. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me, because that's how I'm doing it, too. I've got my priorities for the first five, but the rest of them, not to say I don't ever want to work on them, but these are the ones I'd like to maybe start with.
Yeah, these are our number five on your scoring chart.
Right, right.
Okay, we'll do it that way, then, so there's no, no fives on number two. Number four is adult entertainment. Any fives?
So, can I ask a question? I don't know if Mr. Corcoran is the answer to this. So, this ordinance, there was like almost the same language later in another ordinance, so is this ordinance still in effect? I was confused.
Marty, did you hear the question?
He said that this ordinance is part, is also found in another chapter.
Part, parts of it are, so I was confused, and it was passed after this ordinance, so I just wasn't sure if this ordinance was still in effect, or not? It's adult entertainment.
My understanding is they're both still in effect.
Okay.
This is the one that you're pertaining, talking about, is that business and business regulations? Is that where they have some adult entertainment stuff in there, too?
Let me see. It was actually in zoning.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
So, I, I had this at, as a top, just because I found some kind of problematic language in it that was a little offensive, so I'll put myself down, but if no one wants to work on it, I can wait.
So I'm going to put you down for number four.
Yeah.
Okay, item number six is advertising. That's one area that I've certainly had experience on designing a review board for seven years, so I have that as a five for me. Number eight is alcoholic beverages. No one for that? Number 10 is animals and foul. We got Sean.
Relative priority, since I like animals and I have chickens, so I, so I just, it would be great to revisit that ordinance, so.
And I have it as medium priority, medium interest, so.
And Brentwood has a really good ordinance for that, FYI.
I heard.
So Sandy, I'll put a three down for you, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 12 is buildings and building regulations.
I'm interested in that one.
Okay, we've got no, I'm sorry. Jenny is a five on that, Sean is a five.
I'm a four on it, but yeah.
Okay, Sean is a four. Okay, anyone else a five on that?
I have it as a five high priority, but as a four in terms of my interest.
Okay, so Sandy, I've got a four for you, and I've got a five for Jenny, and a five for myself.
I think Councilmember Partini need to raise her hand.
Yeah.
Got a top priority for you?
It's a mid-level priority for me to be on.
Same here, I'm a four on being on it, but I think it should be addressed.
Okay, so four, and Eleanor, would you say it's a three or a four for you?
I don't care.
Okay. And I've got down as a five for me, as a registered architect, it would make sense that I contribute to that. Item number 14 is business and business regulations. Jenny, five?
I mean, it's probably more of like a four, high three, but.
3.5 or 3.726, or?
Whatever number you want to give it.
Okay.
I'll take it.
Anyone else has, have business as a?
I do. I think it's important, but it's not the one I'm really interested in doing first.
So.
It's a three for me.
Okay. And I've got that as a four for me. Courts? No one on that one?
I think it's a higher priority, but it's not something that I want to work on. I want somebody else to work on it.
So, for some of these, and I just want to say, what's hard is that, you know, to go through and try to figure out what other ordinances look like, I guess to start, are, many of our ordinances are 50 to 40 to 30 years old, so I don't know if there should be other stuff in that, that's not in it. I had it as like a third tier, because I had a few questions about it, but it doesn't mean, like, like Sandy's saying, it doesn't need to be a higher priority, I just don't know. I think that's the problem with some of these.
Yeah.
Did anyone else find that?
Yeah.
So, essentially, no one wants to work on this, at least for right now.
To start.
Okay. 18 is elections. Anyone interested there?
I'm interested.
Your level of interest, Eleanor, would be?
Mid-level.
Okay, emergency management and services. I've got it as a four for me, just because I had to read the manual in my role, so I've got that as for environment. Sean?
Yeah, I have it as a four, four or five.
For you, okay. Fire prevention and protection. I've got that as a four for me, because a lot of it has to do with building codes. Item number 26 is health and sanitation. I know it's pretty exciting, but it doesn't look like anyone. 28 is historic preservation. Sandy, and your level of interest, then?
It's fairly high, I'd say a four.
Okay, and I've got it as five, I was president of this historic preservation commission in when it was founded, and, yeah, it could use a little bit of work, so. Item number 30 is human relations. That was a long one.
I'm interested.
Yeah.
And so.
I'm interested.
Sarah, what would you give your level of interest, four or five?
Five out of five.
Okay, and Sean?
Yeah, five.
And who else? Jenny?
Five.
Okay.
I've got that.
Eleanor?
Yeah. This is my, this is my highest priority one.
So that would be a five for you, okay.
I've got it as a high priority item, but clearly, there's a lot of interest in it, so.
Okay, well, if we have four fives, and you're a four, then you, we, we don't have to go there. Law enforcement, number 32?
I'm also interested in that one.
Okay, Sarah, what, what would you?
Five.
Okay. 34 is offenses?
I have law enforcement as a three.
Okay, Sean is a three. Okay, anyone else for law enforcement?
No.
Right, okay, offenses, item number 34, Jenny, which, what level?
That is my highest, a number five.
And Sandy?
I've got that as a four for me.
Okay, and Sarah?
I, let's say another five.
Okay. Anyone else on offenses? Okay, item number 36 is parks and recreation. Jenny, what's your level of interest there?
Um, I mean, I had it as one of my top ones, so.
I did, too.
Karen, okay. Okay, anyone else wanted to be involved in parks and recreation? Okay. The next one, then, is personnel.
I had this as like a, a three to four, because I had some questions, I think.
Okay, anyone else put it on their list? I had it as a four. Forty, solid waste. I thought everyone would jump on that one. Item number 42, street sidewalks and other public spaces. Okay. Item number 44, subdivisions.
I have that as a medium, just because it's going to go along with planning and zoning, which you will find is going to be a top priority for me. Sorry, zoning.
I'll put you mid-level on that, I've got a four myself on subdivisions.
Yeah.
Taxation. Okay, telecommunications.
I have a, I have this as a, as a three.
Okay. If you had it as a five, I'd expect aluminum foil on your head. Let's see, traffic and motor vehicles?
Hey, this is a free, oh, sorry.
That's okay, a five for me.
I had like a three to four, so.
Erin, I figured that'd be high on your priority list.
Yes, we get, you know, people with traffic and, you know, all the different issues, and it covers, it's a broad area, it would take a long time to go through, but yeah, I would like that one, that's my priority.
Okay. Item number 52 is utilities. Anyone interested? Okay, item number 54 is vegetation.
I have interest in that, a three to a four.
Okay.
I have interest in that one, too. A three is what I have.
Okay. And the last one is zoning.
Yes, please.
I figured you'd want it, so if only one of us gets it, you can have it.
We don't only need one of us, that one's going to take a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
So Jenny, you have a five on that?
I did, yeah.
And Sandy?
Yes, a five.
And I'm sorry, when we started, I was confused, I thought we were just doing fives. I had two more that I was like a three to a four, and that was administration, and then alcohol. So, just wanted to.
Let me get back to that in a second.
Yeah, I have high interest in zoning, I've been wanting to do this for about 12 years now, so.
No way.
Sean, what level should I put you at?
Uh, contributor. I don't have to lead it, but certainly I, I want to help, so.
I've got a book you can borrow, a couple of them.
I have textbooks, but they're from the 70s.
So are statutes, so, there you go.
Okay, Jenny, going back, which ones?
Administration and alcohol.
Okay, those are mid-level?
Yeah, those were like three to four.
Okay. So, at this point, looking at the the list that I have here, the ones that have shown the most interest, human relations has the most, and we've got four people who made it their top priority. And, you know, I'll, I'll summarize this and send it back out to everyone, and I can also put them in descending order with regards to the ones that people showed the most interest in. The next one would be most likely zoning. After that, offenses, and building, building regulations, so, you know, what I'll do is the answers that I was given, the ones that have I guess the most fives to begin with, and then the ones, you know, the order will be ones with the most fours. And and we'll just, you know, I'll, I'll publish those for everyone to, to look at.
So, I think since I'm, we've all sort of identified our priorities, I'm wondering if, like, this is a good moment for us to identify which of the council members will be leading on each section, so that we can then get a sense of what additional council members may be joining us, and then also which boards and commissions members align with that chapter, so we can start, we can end this work session with the teams built out, at least for the human relations chapter, zoning, offenses, and buildings. That's, that's what, like, I was envisioning for the goal to be for tonight.
I was too, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, in, in respect to the, the boards and commission members that have joined us tonight, that, you know, we can at least set the framework of who, who's going to be on what team?
Yeah. So, if we could maybe, and it looks like that four of us have volunteered for the human relations, I will go ahead and pull myself out of that, so we don't create a quorum. So if one of the three council members who said this was a top priority would want to be like the quote-unquote chair of that, I know this is a little more ad hoc than a formal committee, but it might be good for each section to have a deliberate point person.
Eleanor?
Well, who was the, that was Eleanor, Sarah, Sean, and was Jenny, or?
Jenny.
I thought it'd be good, too, to establish like a note taker, too, so like to spread out some of the work, so like, one person does communication, one can sort of do note-taking. And I don't, I don't mind doing either of those for this, but I know this is your very favorite one, Eleanor, so.
It is my, it is my passion point, but whether I can lead it depends a little bit on the timing of when this, when this stuff is happening.
So, I, maybe it would be helpful before we assign to talk a little bit about process, if that will help people figure out what their capacity is, do you think? Because my, my thought is, I guess, that everyone sets their own timing process, right, based on their own personal schedules, like, I think that.
Group of three.
Yeah, the, in the, the group together, so like, we make the groups, then they, you know, have a communication together, and they determine what is a realistic and good timeline for them, which always can be changed, right, like, and then, so, you know, we all have a lot coming up in the next few months, so I think the goal was just to get this started, and then make the groups, and then you know, once we got through like the next couple of months, you know, can probably devote more time to this, so, um, you know, and then maybe check in in six months, right, and just see where everyone's at, if that makes sense? So to answer your question, whoever, the timing is up to, you know, if you're in it, and it'll be too difficult to like do too much right away, then we just wait, you know what I mean?
I think that makes a lot of sense, so, just to summarize it, to make sure I understand, each group would have a council member leading it as chair, a council member, if there's a second one, interested to do notes, and then some amount of boards and commissions members who've expressed interest. That group, following the direction of the chair, will follow their own timeline with a collective understanding that in six months, we're going to do some sort of reporting out on our progress, even if that's. understanding that in six months, we're gonna do some sort of reporting out on our progress, even if that progress is, we've met once and talked about our priorities, and that's as far as we've gotten.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, you know, some of these groups might, you know, I, I understand the concept of having a council member as a chair of the committee, uh, however, you know, as far as someone taking notes in that, I think that can be anyone that's, that's involved in, in the process, so, the idea is to convene each group, establish responsibilities, respective responsibilities amongst the members of that group, establish a schedule, determine, we'll start with the ones that have a council member as a chair, now, there's other committees that people have expressed interest in, that, and I, I don't have the list in front of me, I apologize, but, uh, you know, the idea is if, if they wanna work on a particular topic, is that something that?
What are you referring to when you say they? Do you mean the board and commission members?
Yes.
Like, I just lost you.
We have board and commission members that have expressed interest in serving on on particular topics.
Like topics that we didn't identify as our high priority, is that what you mean?
Uh, yeah, if that's the case, then, and there's no council member to lead that, then, so.
Why don't we just go back to, like, going through the ones that had, like, that we were all interested in?
I feel like.
The chair and the note taker.
Yeah, I think at this point, I think we should start with the ones that council members are, and then, I mean, I think at some point, they will all be addressed, so, if there's one overwhelmingly people think we should do that we missed, we could put a group together, but at this point, I think we've established at least like ten or so that are pretty high priority, and then, you know, and start with those.
Just to FYI, I'm looking back at the, um, the submission documents that came in from the boards and commission members, and it didn't say specifically what they were requesting to participate in.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, you know, again, since they're attending tonight, we may want to ask them to chat in, you know, along with this conversation, I don't know if we wanna bring everybody into the meeting, but we can certainly have them.
Could we first, like, list out the, the ten or whatever, and just confirm the people that are on it, and the tentative chair and the tentative note taker, or the?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's a good idea, Sandy.
And then, yeah, that's a good, yeah, then I like that idea, Sandy.
So, to answer your question, original question, Eleanor, if, if you want me to start, I can start, and then transition it to you at a future point, it's up to you.
Um, I can, um, I can start if the option to transition it is available, and the option to postpone it is available, or like, do it according to our, all of our schedules.
Yeah.
We're talking about human relations then?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's Sean, Jenny, and Eleanor, and Eleanor is going to lead for the moment. Okay. What was it, buildings or zoning?
Zoning, we have three of us that have expressed it as their top priority. Jenny and Sandy. Sandy, would you say that this is the one that you'd most, most likely want to be head of here?
Yeah, this is my, um, not only my highest interest, but also my area of expertise.
Okay, so, is everyone okay with that?
Okay, so who else is gonna be a part of that, is it only three council people?
We had, we had Sandy and myself and Jenny as fives, and we had you as a four.
Okay, no, I just writing down the names here.
Okay. The next one would be offenses, we have two that listed as a five, that's Sarah and, and Jenny. Who would like to?
I had that one as my top one, so I don't mind taking that one.
Okay. Anyone have any issue with that?
No, I do not, I will be your note taker.
I'm sorry, which one am I on?
Now, that one was item number thirty-four, offenses. Then we had item number thirty-six, parks and recreation, we had two people, Jenny and Karen, this sounds like one for you, Karen?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be on that one.
Okay.
So, uh, I will just say, I'm on four of the first four, so Sean, if you'd like to do zoning, you can. But I'm, I'm okay staying on it, but if, if you wanna, if.
Well, this.
Think about that.
Uh, yeah, I'll think about that, um, I was going to do, um, I was just gonna do animals and fowl.
Oh, yeah.
And just grab a, um, a volunteer to help.
Okay.
And then the vegetation one too, as well. And, uh, another council person's fine, but I was gonna, you know, ask somebody, one of the board members to help with that as well, cause they're kind of smaller chunks of the code, I should be able to get through them pretty quickly, um, you know, to present something to the council, so, um, but I, I'm, I'm all for helping on zoning too, so.
And I'm fine doing it, I just don't also wanna be an ordinance hog, I don't wanna take them all.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
As far as we have on law enforcement, Sarah, you and I both have a five on that. Is that one that you, you wanna take the lead?
Yeah, I would, I would have, I would be happy to share that, thank you.
Okay. And then, yeah, a lot of people had expressed interest in buildings and building regulations, I would like to do that one myself.
You can step out on that one, if there were other people.
I'm fine adding in on that one as a second, as a note taker.
Okay. Yeah, you had that as a four, Jenny and Sean both had fours on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could be on it too, or Eleanor, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
And, and I, I can, I don't know if I can, like, comment on it, like, I'm only interested in the occupancy permit section. So, I can, like, I don't have to be on it if I can comment on that section.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all free to comment on any.
Yes, I was gonna note that, I thought it would be very helpful to set it, like, in our process, like, get other council person input, and also, like, public input in the beginning stages, so we can get ideas upfront, so I agree that everyone should be able to count.
Yeah.
Comments on any part.
Well, you could put me down on building and building regs, if you want, as a third council person, I'm fine with that.
So is it Barry, Sandy, Sean? Did I? Wait, no, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And I also have a five on historic preservation, so if I have any board or commission members that have an interest in that, I'll drag them along, it's not a very long section.
And I have that as a four.
Okay, uh, so, that's something that you would be interested in too.
Yes.
Okay, so, at this point, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten of the chapters that have been assigned to council members, so I think that's essentially where we wanted to start. Jenny, you're looking at.
I'm only counting seven.
Same, same here, that's why I was looking.
Okay.
I have seven.
Do you know the numbers?
Okay, let me go through the list. I've got five, Barry. I've got, which is, uh, I'm sorry, at six is advertising, that's me. Uh, twelve, building and building regulations, that's me. Historic preservation is me, you know. Then, human relations is Eleanor. Law enforcement is Sarah. Uh, offenses is Jenny. Parks and recreation is Karen. Uh, vegetation is Sean. And Sean is also animals and fowl, and then Sandy is zoning. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Perfect.
I still missed.
Okay, so at this point, uh, it'll be up to the chairs of these, of these chapter review committees to, uh, you know, I, we need to send out an email to, uh, board and commission members, or maybe we can address it tonight as to, uh, which chapters, unfortunately, you know, they don't have the list of chapters in front of them, uh, we've gone through the list of chapters, so I'm not sure if, you know, you know, we should probably give them some time to, you know, to look through the city ordinances that.
Well, so I think, I think since we have potentially volunteers on the, uh, call tonight, I don't know if it would make sense to have them, like, raise their hand, and we could ask them briefly, or if they wanna put it in the chat, so we can get some initial ideas of the people who are able to join us tonight to discuss it, and then whoever were not able to get ahold of tonight, maybe a follow-up email could be sent.
Yeah, so, I thought we could just, like, we just did, like, let's start with human relations, and we could give everyone a minute to chat if they're interested in that one, and then we could look at the chat, and if no one is, then we can, you know what I mean? Is that work? Is that way, Sarah, kind of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
No, I was gonna just point out that not all of the people who volunteered from boards and commissions are here tonight. It would probably be, be who of us to send out the ones we're, we're, uh, working on, and, uh, just have them respond back. Which one, give, give us their top three or something like that, so then we can start putting them into groups, uh, to help us out. Something along those lines, I.
That, that makes sense to me.
Because, yeah, they didn't get a chance, opportunity, but, a-again, they're really assisting us, we're the ones who are picking it, so, if we say, oh, great, here's the ten things we're working on, who wants to work on what, give us your top three or four, then we're gonna place them in groups, and this'll be your lead, and, and, and then we're done, then we can have, uh, meetings and get timelines set and process and all that, so.
That seems like the most efficient way to do it, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And Ferris. So, can we set a timeline, like, we'll send an email, who will send the email?
Who, the, Karen, Shite, do, do you have the list of, uh, board and commission members that have responded, is that in your possession?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I will get an email to you, I'll, I'll pass it around, uh, send it around to council first for their input, but the idea is, it's essentially gonna list, these are the chapters that are, are, are priorities, and these are the people that are the council members that are assigned to those chapters, please express interest in, you know, your first and second and third choice, you know, with regards to which chapters you'd like to be involved in.
And then could we also provide a deadline in the letter, so that we have a cutoff date?
I can put the email together tonight, and Karen can probably send it out tomorrow, which is Wednesday, uh, and we can give everyone till Monday to make, you know, to consider which chapters, if, you know, that they might wanna, uh, participate in. So.
I, I'd give them a week, um, just to
Agree.
Questions or anything like that, they have an opportunity to ask the council person who's leading it, or yourself, or, um, whomever, um, about.
That makes sense.
That kind of.
And then we, oh, sorry, and then maybe, you know, I don't know if that's you, Barry, or after we get those, we'll have the deadline of the next Monday to put the groups together and send them to the various chairs, or send them to all of us, and then the chair, send them to all of us, I meant, and then, yeah.
I'm happy to get, um, so if we, okay, so if we send out the email, all of the responses will go to one person, or will they go to the chair, because I'm thinking of, like, who's gonna be responsible for just organizing, who goes on what, if they're all sitting in one person's inbox, then that person needs to organize the teams.
Yeah, we were talking about the results, and any responses would go to a central location, then be disseminated to all the council members.
So if they respond back to, let's say, since, like, Mayor, you're the one sending the email, if they all respond back to you, are you just gonna, would you put that into a spreadsheet, is what I'm asking, their responses with
Oh, certainly.
what groups they want, okay, and then from there, okay, thank you.
And I, there's a couple of questions here in the chat that I was gonna read, which I think are good questions, one is, what if board and commission members wanna volunteer for more than three, and I say, put all the things down that you're interested in, in the order you're interested, cause it maybe we don't have enough people. So, I'm okay with that, but if no one else is, that's fine.
Yeah, and if, you know, what I need to express in the email is if, uh, if it's something you definitely wanna be involved in, maybe give it a three, if it's something that you're.
One, two, three, four, like, from most interested, like, that's the order you want to be in them.
Well.
So we, we have a good suggestion in the chat window to, um, make a Google form, which allows you to have, like, ranking boxes.
And then you can rank them all, there you go.
And it's automatically populated into a spreadsheet. Yeah, I'm happy to volunteer to create that survey link, so then, Mary, you can send it out, I will do that.
Can I ask you, does, quick question, Barry, do you know if library board got invited to, got the original email from Anthony about survey?
I have everybody on the board and commission distribution list.
There's two people on that board that responded.
Okay.
They did.
Um, I just wanna address another question in the chat, is someone saying that, you know, they may be interested, but wanting to know when meetings would be, and so just to reiterate, each group will, um, form their own meeting schedule, so like, everyone will work together to find the time that works best for everybody in the group, so if that helps.
Yeah, that'll help.
Yeah.
Timing impacts all of us.
People are volunteering their time, we wanna make it convenient for them to do so. And so, okay, so at this point, to summarize, we have ten chapters that have leads, leaders from city council, and we're going to contact the board and commission members who expressed, well, as far as I can, it can go out to everyone, it doesn't have to go out just to the ones that expressed interest, cause they might see a topic that, that they have a specific interest in, so, and Karen Shite, you have the, uh, you know, you have all those email addresses?
Yeah.
Cause that's, that should be the same list that we, we originally went out, uh, with request for, so, so, what I'll do is I'll list the chapters, list who's going to be in charge, talk about the process a little bit, and that the, uh, those interested will get together in a Zoom meeting, they will establish responsibilities, establish the schedule, and and I think that's mainly what we're, what we need to do to start with.
And Sarah, if you need a second set of eyeballs on the Google form, just let me know.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, I'll work on the email tonight, uh, assuming that we don't go to midnight on the, uh, council, uh, meeting, and then, uh, I'll have it, uh, in Karen Shite's hands tomorrow, and she can, uh, distribute it to all the board and commission members, and then, uh, a week from tomorrow, we, uh, Sarah and Sean should have a, uh, account of who wants to be involved in, in which chapter. So, uh, in that case, is there anything else that needs to be addressed with regards to this particular discussion?
You gonna determine the size of a group, or it can be as large as you want?
You gonna determine the size of a group, or can it be as large as you want?
The question was uh, you know, is there a size limitation on the group? And, you know, I don't see uh, the need to, I don't think we're gonna get uh, large groups of people as far as, you know, if they do, then there'll be a lot of discussion, but uh.
A group becomes very ineffective after four or five people.
I don't, yeah, I think we, the most we have is three council members. So if we added, you know, two to three, four member, you know, I think that's good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with a five-person limit on them for now. You know.
I need to include that in the.
But, you know, you're right, I mean, with ordinances that large, uh, if you've got 10 people working on it, um, it could take years.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but on the other hand, the advantage is that if you have that many people working on it, you can assign responsibilities.
It's very difficult to have effective group dynamics with a, a group bigger than like five.
Well, and we'll also, everyone will all be able to provide input too. So like, if we, you know, it's a lot of work, so I think uh, two people doing it outside of this group. And then we'll also have, everyone will have the ability to provide suggestions and stuff too, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll kind of arbitrarily set it right around five. I mean, but once we get the spreadsheet back, the chairs can make a decision about, you know, if it's five people or six people or, you know, that kind of thing. I think that's, I think that'd be a pretty fair way to do it.
Okay.
I had a couple of just general things. Maybe these are more for uh, Mr. Corcoran or to pass along. Um, but so the ordinance is online. The last time they were updated was last April and I didn't know if they were scheduled to be updated soon, or if they can be updated, because it'd be really helpful if whatever is online is the most recent ordinance. And then also if going forward, when we pass an ordinance, if we can put a link to it on that page, so that whatever's not in the code that's online, at least there's a link to what we've passed, so we know what the most recent ordinances are. Cause that's our resource for this, is the code online is what we're using.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm completely unclear on what, what in MuniCode is current or not.
So it says it's, yeah, so it says it's up, updated through April, but who, I mean, I don't have a list of what we've passed since then. So I think just in general, it'd be helpful in between updates if they, those ordinances um, or just a link was put on so that we can access, you know, um, if that's possible.
So Marty, would you confirm that the last update was uh, was close to a year ago?
I, I can't confirm that. I'd have to go look it up real quick, but I can.
I mean, it says it on there. It says April 16th, 2020. So I mean, we know when it was updated, it's just, it hasn't been since then. And we have passed several ordinances since then. I think when we're starting this process, it'd be great if we could be as up to date as possible. And then also be able to access anything we pass after the next update until the following one. Does that make sense?
Yes, we can do that.
All right, thank you. And then my other general thing was that I love to hear, like, honestly from staff, if there are any issues related to any of these, like in processing or in their daily dealings with people that they think need to be updated in any of these ordinances? Cause they're the ones who are often implementing these, especially the processes. So I guess I was just, I just throw that out there if anyone else thought that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So there's two parts to that. One is to, is for uh, staff members to review, you know, our uh, proposed changes, and the other one is to get input from them with regards to what they would think. So as far as the last one, as far as the input, uh, I would think, you know, that, that's obviously something that needs to go through staff. And uh, so uh, Marty, if you can make a request for uh, whether you want to be, you know, rank and file or, or just department heads, but to, you know, that have issues that they want addressed in the code of ordinances. And then I think that also uh, as we make these recommendations, they need to review that too. Since they're the, the ones that are going to be pretty much involved in implementing uh, whatever changes we're talking about. So it'd be nice to have that input uh, early in the process. So uh,
I'll be glad to pass that along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion with regards to, we have a half an hour before the regular meeting starts? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, a second. Uh, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? The, the work session is, is adjourned. Uh, we will be reconvening at 7:30 to have our regular council meetings. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.